I'd like to call together, a call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. Please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we need to approve the minutes from last night. The reason is, is that for Krista to proceed with the cemetery grant, she needs an approved, certified copy of the minutes from the meeting where I was authorized to apply for that grant. So Jennifer prepared some minutes. I just caught one spelling error in the public comments, spoke about the health of the ponds at Cherry Land Park, a lawn park there, which I'll give that to you, but that was the only correction I saw. Does anybody else have any corrections? I guess we have to vote to add new business to the agenda by a two-thirds vote. Could someone move to add new business to it? Mike move? Sarah seconds? All in favor? Alright, so new business is these minutes. Any other comments on the minutes? Okay. Motion to approve. Monica move? Sarah seconds? All in favor? Good. Okay. So that is taken care of. So on our agenda tonight, it's just on our agenda is budget review. So we're going to talk about library, public works, transfers, address management, employee benefits, contingency, and debt service. Jennifer?
Okay. What I have up on the screen is the library's updated proposed budget. They did have an adjustment after I reviewed my proposed budget with you on the 21st. They have an adjustment of about $25,000. They had assumed a 5% increase in their insurance. The indicator right now is 11%. They were able to trim back some other lines, so their total increase is about $25,000 over what was initially proposed. But overall, they're still at a 3.37% increase, which is about $150,000. The majority of that is in their staffing. It's about $89,000 increase, but only 3%. They're in the fourth year of their five-year compensation plan, so they're holding FTEs steady and they're at a 3% overall increase for salaries. And then their other larger increase is within employee benefits for about $67,000. And that's where we see the $62,000 increase in health, dental, and life insurance.
What percentage change was that?
Other than that, very status quo budget.
Yes, so Jennifer and I had a chance to go through the budget with them in detail. And as I've seen for the past 16 years of looking at library budgets, it was thorough, it was complete, it was explained, it had every detail that we really needed. And once again, you really just don't have any questions about the budget. And it's just a testament to not just Kira and the leadership of the library, but the board and the attention that you guys pay to that process and the fact that it's been that impressive for so long. I just want you to know how personally thankful I am, not just for that budget, but for the example that it sets everybody else. It really is, it's first rate. There's just no other way to describe it. So thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Now, we are going to have to cut it 20%. No.
You're really a comedian.
No, I, we've been through it in detail and I didn't have any other questions. Anybody have any reactions or?
No, I just think it's really impressive, the number of people you serve and, you know, the metrics for that, and I love the little ROI at the end.
That's a great, great chart.
But like John said, I think the detail that you provide is, it just gives us all of the information we need. So really, great job for the town, just the service you provide, but great job on the budget too.
Thank you. And every year that I've been doing this, the last, I guess this is the fifth year, you know, the past questions that this board has had has helped inform a lot, you know, to add to that detail every time. So we really do try to improve it and answer all of your questions and provide as much data, statistics, analysis as we can. So if anything does come up and is not part of the package, you know, I'm always happy to provide what you need.
One question I have is, is there anything that you'd like us to think about that's a concern, a worry, something coming down the track, something that you're thinking about that could be relevant, say, to a future budget discussion that we should keep in mind?
I mean, I'm not sure how it may shake out in terms of dollars and cents, but something we are very concerned about is our parking situation. I don't know that there's much to do in terms of our parking, but the coming development with the Nielsen property, we are antis- like, we're already, I can bet we're very popular. We do have, you know, patrons starting to complain that they're circling, they can't find a spot. We, I have gotten a phone call or two from the chief saying that we had some patrons parking in the police lot or parking in Nielsen's when they shouldn't be. So we are being very mindful in terms of our program planning, our scheduling, doing our best to be very thoughtful about spacing out big events and not, you know, having too much overcapacity in terms of the events that we're hosting. Our main concern is when that development starts, we do have an area that Jerry Nielsen lets us park our staff, so we don't have staff contributing to, you know, our parking issues. We park in the back. And I'm worried that during construction, and hopefully not after, but there may come a time when we don't have access to that parking lot, which means that our actual public parking lot will become more distressed. So we've been talking internally about other places to park, you know? Could we park at Town Hall? I don't know. I don't really know what's the right answer, but I don't want our patrons and our residents to become increasingly frustrated when they're trying to get access to the library and they can't. So, you know, our board is talking a lot about contingency planning and what to do over the next few years. So I, you know, if any of the town officials in this body have thoughts or suggestions.
Unfortunately, the new Corbin district has set the standard for a six-story parking lot.
I don't know that that's in their five-year capital.
No, but we've had a number of internal discussions about that and you're right to bring it up because it's, it's not a problem that's going to get better because there's not just the new developments, but frankly, just an increased interest in the services you've got, you guys provide. I think it's the second destination of choice behind the senior center for senior citizens. So it's not just kids that are going there. So, and that's just going to get better, worse, but better because of the program that you guys provide. So thinking about a solution that we can put in longer term that would solve that, I don't know what it is, if it's not a parking garage, but we can talk.
Perhaps as you consider, you know, this issue, if you can note the times that appear to be peak.
Like a traffic type of thing?
Whatever, whatever that might be, because it is, you know, it's a jewel. I mean, it's arguably, a library can really be the center of a community like it is at most colleges. It's usually at the center of the campus and there's a reason for that. And I think, you know, this library has become a real center for so many different, different folks in our population. So, yeah, let's keep an eye on that parking and let's see if we can come up with some creative solutions.
Do you ever have people use the lot that's behind any of the medical buildings? I know I go there sometimes, I feel like that little walkway isn't so bad, but.
No, it's not. And.
I don't know how full it gets all the time. You have a better idea than I do.
Well, the deal we have with Jerry Nielsen is that evenings after five and weekends, anytime, our patrons can park.
That's nice.
Anywhere back there. During weekdays, nine to five, we're really not supposed to because the medical buildings and offices, you know, use those spaces. So having that flexibility though, even, even nights and weekends to point our patrons, especially for our evening events.
Right.
Which gather a lot of folks, has been useful. Again, I don't know if that's going to remain a thing during construction. I know that not all of that is part of the development plans. At least one of them is remaining, but during construction, are people still going to have access?
I know it wouldn't open up a tremendous number of spots, but can I, would it be possible to park it like on the road adjacent to the cemetery?
So I think they've got to know parking right now. I think that's something we can talk to chief about, but.
I think it was previously allowed for parking a decade ago.
Really?
Yeah. If memory serves.
Move that back.
Yeah.
The cemetery on Cemetery Design.
Yeah, 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 right on the.
What solved the issue, though?
Of course.
No, but it's, it is, we're going to have those conversations.
Okay. Any other questions on the library budget?
I just had a question. What does your capital budget look like, one year, five years out? Do you think large hits coming down the way? You guys have done some phenomenal projects over the years, but do you have anything like that planned or no?
Yes, so we did basically a seven-year capital project outlook. And as you know, you know, these are all, these are friends' projects. We don't come to the town for these projects. So there's a mix of really fun, interesting, like love to have, and then there's some not fun, but need to have. So there's really boring stuff like paving the parking lot.
No, no, it's not boring.
Reupholstering some of the furniture, you know, stuff like that. But then we have more exciting projects. So our lower level, for instance, where we have, if you've been down to the teen lounge, it's just, it's a great space, it's a small space. We now have some areas that are underutilized because of some shifts we made during COVID. So the plan is to secure enough funding to transform that lower level into like a full tween and teen library, the way that the children's library is sort of the library within the library for that zero, you know, to 10, 11 age group, really service tweens, the middle schoolers, and the teens, different types of collections, a programming space, gaming space, study quiet space, with the library desk sort of right in the middle of it all and their collections. So that's a more exciting project, especially given the population.
There's a lot that comes.
Right? That rising tween population. So that's a fun project. Then we have a couple of fun things in the children's library, refreshing our soaring time room and doing some early play space installations for the little, little ones. We also want to re, sort of reimagine part of our first floor. We've been to the library, you know, that area that's sort of across from the cafe near the community room?
Yeah.
Stacks of our fiction. A lot of people don't realize that that's actually, there's like a little fireplace.
Lovely. I've said it, it's lovely, yeah.
So we want to figure out if we can just make some small changes to kind of open that up visually and make it a more flexible space too. If we could push some of the shelves back or have them be mobile, that could also be a programming space, you know, for small book groups or smaller programs, so. And more of a bookstore, like comfy, get your coffee, cuddle up with a book and, you know, enjoy the fireplace. So things like that, where we're just reimagining better, more flexible uses of existing space.
But it is a 15-year-old building, right?
Right.
So instead of having a big blockbuster sexy project, it's a, there's a lot of stuff we have to do, right? Just from a maintenance perspective, combined with, you know, a series of smaller projects, highlighted by.
But it's 15 years, gosh.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Gosh, I feel old.
January, January 2009.
It's still noon, my answer.
Other questions? Thank you, friends. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ash. Appreciate the support, as always. Thank you.
Next up.
Next up is DPW, and we do have Ed Gentile here because he can answer a lot more than I can. But starting on operating, their budget is up just under $370,000, which is about a 7% increase on the expenditure side. And on the revenue side, they're up about $137,000, which is just over 6% increase. In administration, they're up 4.5%, and that's really just a function of salaries. They had a mid-year reclass of one of their clerical positions. Actually, take that back, that was in the sewer fund. They had a couple of town hall employees, so that's what we saw in other departments. We didn't have the final salaries in the adopted budget, so it's kind of two years of increases, but really status quo in admin. In roadway and walkway maintenance, they actually have a decrease, and that is kind of a function of a lot of small changes, one of which is overtime. We've reduced the annual number of storms that we're using to budget overtime. I do think that we're starting to see a little bit of a shift in our winter patterns, but we haven't seen enough that we can make a big adjustment there because if we do get one big storm, that'd be a number. But it is something that we're kind of keeping our, our eye on and moving into the future is, you know, can we adjust the way that we budget for snow? One thing that we do need to adjust here is, I made a calculation error on our motor, fuel, and lubricants. I picked up the wrong number. We didn't lock in at 239, we locked in at 259. So we actually have to add $11,000 back into motor, fuel, and lubricants.
Okay.
In waste management, this is their, the big driver of their increase. The total division is up just under $250,000, which is 14%. And all of that is really due to their solid waste contract. The contract was renegotiated, there are unit cost increases, but our quantities just continue to escalate. We're kind of just chasing our tail on it. The good news is that this is offset by an increase in revenue. We are looking at our refuse tipping fees, the total increase is 142,000. So the net change for waste, the waste management side of it, the refuse disposal is about $100,000.
Just for the public's benefit, could you take a minute or two and just give us a little history on waste management, both the contract and what the problem is, if you can understand why we're facing this, and maybe just about recycling and the different streams of waste that we're experiencing. Okay? Give my best shot?
The driver for a lot of the changes that you're seeing is the commodities with regards to recycling. What can and cannot be recycled, what's becoming reusable, what has not been, what has fallen off between cardboard and paper, which is highly reusable, and things that they're taking at a higher rate, to plastics, to glass, which they can't seem to get a reuse value for. So that in particular has driven a lot of the changes for the waste management contracts that we have. We were probably one of the last towns in Jefferson County to have any revenue generated from recycling. We were able to get a contract in early when I started here and push it out eight years. That was good until last year, where I had to renegotiate a contract and we had to start paying for recycling. It went from paying us $7.50 a ton to costing us $75,000, $75 a ton. So it's a pretty good swing. What has also happened now with recycling, less recycling numbers now are coming in. And there's an increase in MSW. And it's not a straight across-the-board increase, it's actually, some of the increase, I believe, has to do with maybe less recycling going on, but we also are getting more visits from haulers and the volume and tonnage has increased also, based on either more customers or more solid waste. But our numbers have easily gone from 3,400 tons of MSW to we're predicting over 5,200. That's a pretty good size increase, about 67%. So looking at all those factors, increase now in cost of managing facility, straight across the board, numbers that we've set in the contract, plus the set for MSW, I made them set a price, they were looking at 4%, we wanted to, we met in the middle at 3%. Now that's predicted now for five years. At least I know what my costs are going to be. Couple of the other items in line with the original contract are tied to the EPI.
Really, your only uncertainty is the volume of waste treatment and character of that waste.
Yeah, and you have to, you know, read the tea leaves, if you will. You have to take a look at any trends that you've picked up over the last couple of years, but then any trends you picked up over the last couple of months. And you have to keep an eye on that as it goes, as it goes forward, like every other year that I've been here, December, January, increase in MSW. Decreases during the summertime when people are, I mean, straight off that, but the volume, total volume has increased.
Is there an opportunity to be more aggressive with the fees that we charge commercial haulers? We've done that once before, thanks to.
October 2023, I believe, we did an increase. Before Kate had left, we had discussed, you know, when the good interval would be. She said every two years is probably a good time to start looking at what we're charging, the big number being MSW, and whether we should be adjusting those numbers. And then there were some big increases in brush, lobs, leaves, that, those numbers, this time around, we should look at them a little bit too, to see if we should.
Yeah, the reality is, is all those trash haulers are passing on those costs to residential customers, landscape customers. They're, I, my landscape bill, I get a charge for that, and those people should pay for that. And so if they're not covering the full cost of these kind of commercial drops, maybe it's time to rethink that.
I have to say that running some of the numbers to see where are we need to be with unit cost, fees, to try to make this part of my waste budget pay for itself, it was a rather large increase in a lot of the numbers. And I've never been able to see this, close the gap to where it was zero. So I think there's an opportunity to close the gap. I just, getting to zero is very, very difficult and very, very burdensome, I think, to the tax collectors in town.
Ed, aren't you, aren't you break even on recycle?
Right.
They're charging, they're charging 75, right?
Correct. And there's.
Yeah. And we bumped, yeah. So we bumped the MSW a little bit. So maybe we bumped the recyclable. But what I don't understand is, if the MSW is up and recycling is down, but recycling is actually cost less, are you thinking that people aren't separating and that recycling is going into the MSW?
I don't, I think there may be some, a mindset out there that maybe it's not beneficial to spend that time doing it anymore. And I think now the haulers either increased, it used to be free for them.
Right.
So anything that they were charging to come that extra wraparound and pickup years probably was very small, if at all, but I'm sure they're probably charging to pick up the recycling. Well, now it's going to cost them $75 a ton. I got to think that that cost went up and it may be, and I haven't, haven't looked into it, I haven't gotten the numbers back, but it may be pretty close to dues to MSW. So maybe, you know what, we're just going to do it once a week, instead of twice a week, and we'll put everything in MSW. That's, the numbers are telling me that. My sense is that's what's going on.
So, so increasing recycling isn't really going to help us?
It's probably not going to get the big benefit that you're looking for.
Right. So we are not break even on the haulers coming in, what we're paying for that, is that you're saying?
When I said that the overall, the overall picture, that's everything.
Okay.
From, you know, batteries, the tires, the lots.
Right, 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 okay.
To run that transfer station to break even, we're running about $100, $300,000 deficit.
Deficit.
But since I've been here, we've been running around $200,000 to $300,000 deficit.
Yeah, my only point was that if it's a residential person, they think that costs themselves. And so being aggressive with fees for those guys, I mean, we think about that, but we talk about commercial haulers, that's a pass-through end. They're passing through the cost to their ultimate customers, businesses, destruction sites, somebody else is paying all that. And so if you could isolate what it costs to accommodate the deeds of your commercial businesses who are passing on those costs, I just wonder if there's an opportunity to be more aggressive with just that pricing.
We don't get a lot of commercial garbage into our facility. It's residential, it's residential haulers that are dumping in our sites.
Okay. But are they coming from out of town?
That's a good question. They're not supposed to be.
Right.
And there's always that opportunity that, you know, they have a route that goes both places, Darien or Wal comes in, they dump here. The local, the local areas where they can dump have diminished. We are one of the larger transfer stations. We have a $5,000 floor capacity. City carding's Taylor Reed place only has 1,000. They end up shutting down their facility two or three times a week at noon. There's garbage guys that are coming in afternoon that they end up over at our place dumping. Kind of a backup, if you will. City carding does the same thing, win waste. If they run out of space, they dump at ours. They're paying us, basically, to store their, their garbage for a short period of time and take it away.
So it's up from 3,200 to 5,200 tons, and most of that's residential haulers. In other words, haulers that are hauling for.
It's all, it's all residential.
Also residential.
It's a huge increase in our.
For a state, basically, a state will know about residential.
So I, it took mine, it's one, I think there's probably some outside influences, if you will.
Yeah, but we're still making money on those, those deliveries.
Straight across the board, yes.
Like 20 bucks.
What they, what they charge, you drop it off, what they charge, they take it away, sure. But there's, like every other business, there's employee costs.
Other costs, right.
Things like that.
By the way, is the compactor working? I heard that thing was out. Is it repaired?
No, they got one of them up and running, from what I understand.
When was the last time we replaced that compactor?
The good thing about it is that the town doesn't have to.
That's a surprise.
We don't waste responsibility for the compactors.
Okay.
Which are, we asked you, as we're negotiating contract, those items are working well.
Okay.
They got, they had to get the new bins, the roll-offs to pack them. And they're special because they have actually rollers inside.
Yeah.
To actually release the garbage at the end, when they dump it. So those are supposed to be new, we're supposed to get one in three months and then one and another six months after that.
Okay.
We should close it in on the second one right now.
Okay. And it'll help your capacity?
It'll, it'll help the functioning of the, one of the open dumpsters taking garbage anymore, be neater, cleaner, more efficient.
Right. That's great.
Another area of significant increases in building management, up about $102,000, 12%. One of the drivers here is the facility maintenance mechanic, which was approved in October 2024. So we have a full year cost of that in here, which is about $68,000. That's driving up the salary expense. And then the other big increase here is in electricity. Across all departments, they all put in their electricity estimate, but then I standardized the way that we look at it. I projected their current year, adjusted for our supply change, the supply rate change that's going to occur mid-year, '26, and then assumed a 50% reduction in the public benefits and FMCC, I don't even know what that stands for, but those were big increases that are, should be expiring this spring. Kind of remains to be seen what actually happens with electricity rates, but using that method, there's about a $26,000 increase to the electricity account in this, in this division.
And you did that, Jen, across the board?
Yep. Every electricity account has that same method.
Is that, is that, that FT, is that all on you, Ed, or is part of that with police?
That, one, the facilities maintenance mechanic is 100% in Ed's budget, and then the facilities coordinator is 100% in the police budget, but in terms of work, you know, there's some split there.
Okay.
And that salary, there is a small portion paid by the parking fund.
Yeah.
Right. Sewer fund. Right. 80, 10, 10, right?
Yeah, I thought it was 80, yeah.
Same as Dave's setup is, he's the existing, so we set them up the same way.
Okay.
Where are you on hiring the folks for the police station?
We had interviews last week for the facilities mechanic. We had a delay in doing the interviews. And we have two good candidates. One of the candidates was also an applicant for the facility coordinator. We just had the facility coordinator, one of the other applicants. So right now it's, we're looking at a selection process where the best fit is out of those three.
Some pretty mechanics to look at.
Their, their parking operations in the general fund is very small and it's up 6%. It's mostly driven by salaries due to step increases. And then on the revenue side, the big change is those refuse tipping fees, and that's based on the volumes, the rates that we charge and what we're seeing as a trend, the recyclable tipping fees, the new one, is coming in about $13,000, $14,000 per month. And then just some small adjustments here and there based on historical, on the other revenue accounts.
Public Works Capital. Wait, can I ask?
Yep.
So you're cutting back a little bit on this, thinking about the storms? Do you want to cut back on the salt at all?
They did already.
You did?
Yeah, we've been storing salt every year. But these, these storms that we've gotten this year, I think we've had five outings, if you want to call them that, and a couple with snow, a couple which is ice and rain, depleted our, our salt to almost 400 tons. We started with 1,300. So those, salt events take a bigger hit than actually the snow ones do. So we just ordered 700 tons just today. So far, we're, we're staying within our budget, but I'm not going to be able to replenish that again. It's an opportunity to draw on a person.
And do you think the overtime for, for holidays, the dump being open, do you get like a lot of good feedback on that?
It's, it's used quite.
Is it?
Yeah, there's, everyone's home.
Yeah.
It's as busy as a Saturday.
I, I mean, I don't feel compelled to go to the dump on Christmas, but.
But they're not open on Christmas. What is it open, like Memorial Day and?
Yeah.
They've got a list of like ten days of the, right, like something like that, yeah.
They have Thanksgiving, Memorial Day, Columbus Day, day that the union has off.
Okay.
But I have to staff the, the transfer station.
And people like that?
Those are the holiday days.
Capital, for the most part, this is just maintaining our existing infrastructure. First one is to replace a twenty-twelve Ford F-550 for one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. It's a low-oide dump truck and it's reaching the end of its useful life. The next one is five hundred thousand dollars for sidewalk rehabilitation. A lot of this is just addressing uneven and deteriorated surfaces, addressing ADA compliance, which is required by the state. They do work off of a list and a handicap inspection list, and that was updated and revised last year. They did have unspent bond funds last year, so we did not fund this in fiscal twenty-five. But they are working through those bond funds. And we anticipate needing another round of funding for fiscal twenty-six. Townwide paving, one point four million. This is on track with what we've spent in previous years. And this helps us stay on track with our twenty-year lifecycle for resurfacing. Five thousand dollars for the tree replacement program. We talked about this a little bit with Park and Rec. This is one that we do every year for DPW. A lot of it is in response to requests from residents or where the department observes that a tree is needed because maybe there was a loss to a storm event or we need to enhance some tree cover. One hundred thousand dollars for Old Kings Highway South Bridge repair for scouring. We had the design funds, fifty thousand budgeted in fiscal twenty-five. This is one hundred thousand for the construction. And this is to protect bridge abutments, which will help protect the bridge. And if not done, we could have failure of the bridge footings. Similar project for the next one, it's Camp Avenue Bridge, but this is the design portion for the scour repair. So fifty thousand dollars in fiscal twenty-six and then the construction in the out years. And it's for the same thing, to protect the abutments. Fifteen thousand dollars for the replacement of the ceiling in the fire marshal's office. They have very old ceiling tiles, some of them are coming down. DPW looked at repairing and replacing them, but couldn't find anything available to match. So they need to replace the existing ceiling. Five thousand dollars for replacement of AED batteries in Town Hall in the DPW garage, just consistent with best practice for safety protocols. Twenty-five thousand dollars for resurfacing of the lower lot here at Town Hall. We actually appropriated seventy-five thousand in fiscal twenty-two, but the department held off on the project while they were doing the gym windows project because they didn't want to damage the new surface. Prices have escalated for material and labor costs, so that seventy-five thousand is still available, but they need an additional twenty-five thousand dollars to now do the project. Twenty thousand dollars for HVAC upgrades in the Mather Center DAC art room. This is its own standalone unit that currently vents out the window. And they are looking to put in two proposed split units. And it'll make the whole system more efficient and have to run the boilers less often. Twenty-five thousand dollars for carpet replacement in first floor offices. It's old and worn and needs to be replaced, safety and aesthetic issues. And twenty-five thousand dollars for design of repairs to the elevated walkway that goes to the Town Hall gym. They've been watching that for a while. It continues to deteriorate and so they need to start planning the repair. This is also an ADA accessibility issue because that is the handicap access to the Town Hall gym and that wing of Town Hall. That means all their capital.
I have one question. So we put twenty thousand away for sidewalk, for the sidewalk consultant?
Yeah, that's actually in this fiscal, no, that's next fiscal.
In fiscal twenty-six.
Fiscal twenty-six. And then the following year, there's another two hundred and fifty thousand tentatively set for the capital budget because we do five hundred a year. And I think it was the next year, we've got seven fifty.
Yep.
That number. I can see us needing more than that. I really don't know what the sidewalk consultants are going to say in terms of where we might prioritize some of this stuff. If you look at some of the places where they want to put sidewalks, like from Ox Ridge up Mansfield to Pembroke, the engineering to put in that sidewalk is not trivial. It's a huge bank there. I, I have no idea what that's going to cost. And so rather than prospectively try and budget that, I mean, if it's a major project, we could end up bonding that. So I, I don't know what to say about it yet. We are going to have a consultant start that process though.
You had for the Darien Harbor, it was like.
Oh, yes, thank you. So that was one of our unknowns, the Darien Harbor dredging. If you recall, probably a year or so ago, there was a special appropriation for twenty-five thousand dollars to start looking into the permitting for dredging, dredging the main part of the harbor channel. This is not part of the Pear Tree project. Close, but not. Yeah, it'd be great if we can get it all to come together at the same time. So the consultant is working on the permitting. The big unknown there is soil testing. And that will let us know if it's clean enough, we can go with the less expensive disposal method. If it's not clean enough, it's going to be a more expensive disposal. So that's why it's an unknown, as, the timing is unknown as well. We don't know when we're going to get through that permitting process.
It's with the Army Corps right now or is it with the D?
I think it's with DEEP right now, if I recall. So I don't even have a placeholder to put in there, but I want to keep it on everybody's radar that we're working towards getting a number for that. And I, I do think it might be something, if it would make sense and if the timing works out, that we can coordinate it with the Pear Tree dredging.
I was just going to say, you have dredging there too, yeah.
You know, we would come to you for an appropriation to be off cycle, but I think we would all understand that there would be a good reason for that.
One of the things I think that's interesting is that the Pear Tree Point project has these three components, the parking lot, the boat ramp, and the dredging. The dredging is, can be handled separately. And we can do the parking lot, the boat ramp together and simply wait for the harbor dredging to become viable.
I mean, it makes sense, I think, if you're going to have them dredge all of it.
Yeah, the only problem is, is we have been through that process for the boat club dredging. And there's a time limit associated with that permitting that we need to pay attention to.
When does it expire?
Three years from now.
I think that sounds right.
Twenty-seven?
No, twenty-eight, I think.
Twenty-eight?
Any case, that's time limited.
Right.
And so the reason we're pushing this other is, to your point, I'd like to kind of get all that certified at the same time, put it out to bid, have both projects done. It's truly less expensive, kind of to your point about pond dredging yesterday, to get both those done. So that's what we're hoping for, but more to come.
John?
Yes, sir.
Quick question, this also going back to yesterday. We were talking about the retaining wall of Red Firehouse. Is Ed supervising that repair? I mean, who's like managed, I hate to do that to you.
Excellent question.
Well, because that's going to be two million dollars, we're going to have a building committee associated with that. So whatever the contractor is, there's going to be a group that's appointed to oversee that specific project. So right now, I don't know. We've got to get the project and we'll put a committee in place.
Okay, and then the other one is, when we're talking about the dredging of the basin, if Ed's supervising the channel, is it Park and Rec that supervises? I mean, I'm just trying to understand operation.
Yeah, so the park jurisdiction is on the land, it's not the water.
Okay.
So what's, kind of what I'm talking about, we do the dredging kind of all together. And that's a much more discreet project, I think, than building a wall. Because it's kind of a one and done, you get the equipment out there, you dredge, they know what they're doing. There's nothing really to supervise. But the potential efficiency of doing both projects at the same time, since they're practically co-located, would be great. And even if those projects are north of a million dollars, I'm not sure what a building committee would do. I mean, we ought to have the right protocols for that. But I'm not sure there's anything to supervise. But for the rest of the Pear Tree project, there would be a building committee. That's a more complicated project.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering, and you're right, if it was two million dollars, it has to have one. But I was just wondering how, was how giving resources on that?
Yeah, so, well, the Pear Tree Point, We Beach, those are, those should not take up much of the public works and Park and Rec time, simply because they'll be building committee overseeing. So I think it's just a matter of resource constraints and third parties.
Yeah, and they're supervising that they do them right there.
Excuse me, Public Works has a few other funds. Ed has a lot. So the first one they have is the sewer operating fund. This one is paid for by sewer use fees. So you'll see that because it's its own self-contained fund, the revenues and expenditures match up perfectly. But for operations, they're increasing about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, which is only two point four five percent. They are budgeting a decrease in the amount that we send over to Stanford. That is a very tough number to pin down. It's calculated in arrears on the prior year, I think. And Ed has to do his best to estimate it in this budget. But the good news is because this is its own fund, any revenues that come in are solely for this purpose. So we have fewer administrative constraints. If for some reason, like that Stanford number is wrong, he can go over budget. We don't have to keep coming back for appropriations because it's its own self-contained fund.
Yeah, Jen's staying with that. Ed, your sewer usage charge went up. I mean, it's not a lot of money, but it went up a decent percent. Is that because the sewer people raised your rate?
We, the rate has a couple strong components, one of them being our flows to Stanford. We saw an increase in flow and we saw an increase based on the rain that we had during this time last year caused our flows to increase over there. So with that number going up, we had to chase that a little bit. There was a capital improvement that they did, they paid for out of their fund balance instead of bonding it over three and a half million dollars. We own fifteen percent of that. And they like to pay it upfront. So I was able to, after speaking with them about proper notification on something like that, because it impacts us directly, I was able to work with them to allow us to spread that over two or three years to get caught up. And that's where we're at right now.
Okay.
Does the I and I work helping in this?
I was just going to ask the same question.
Good question, both.
Well, it was John's first, yeah.
That's exciting.
I was going to say, we're paying for all this water to get processed, I mean, it's crazy.
There's, there's, there's two, two ends to that too. We just had a couple developers do analysis on the sewer shed that we've been working on. And were able to show us that there is, with wet weather flow decreases at our pump station at Stony Grove, which shows us that our work that we're doing is actually providing a benefit.
Okay.
The other piece is we're going to be rolling out a process to help us eliminate sun pumps, which seems to be twenty-five to thirty percent of our hard inflow to our systems. Tracking them down.
Residential sun pumps?
Correct.
That are tied, okay, but that are tied into the sanitary sewer?
Correct, and that's a violation, not only state plumbing code, but our town limits.
How do we find them? I and I?
We're going to go with the honor system at the beginning.
But if you see a mass increase in somebody's usage, it's kind of a.
If you see some smoke coming out of your chimney.
We tried that, but some of them have backflow valves on them. So the smoke can't get through some of the backflows valves on those pumps. It'd be nice to be able to identify them quickly and easily like that. And some of them don't. We did find some commercial companies with those.
And some of them don't know that they have it, right? If it's in older buildings, sometimes they don't know.
Older buildings, yes. Residential, maybe new owners, some people don't realize it. But nowadays with the climate change and flooding and stuff like that, in this area, if you're buying this area, you're walking in the basement and you're, you can't miss it.
Oh, no, of course, yeah, I hear you, yeah.
But you're asking the question now.
Right.
Sometimes the newer, younger homeowners don't ask all those questions. They're learning.
Sewer capital, the standard slate of projects. Pump replacement, which every year they look at multiple stations and do installation of new control equipment, backflow valves, gate valves, that sort of thing. So fifty thousand dollars for that. Twenty-five thousand dollars for sewer main CCTV and cleaning. They do ten percent of the total infrastructure per year. And this is to comply with the Capacity Management Operation and Maintenance Program. Chemical root control, nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. This is an every year thing to eliminate the chance of clogged pipes and overflows. And twenty-five thousand dollars for collection system rehab. And that's to repair and replace sewer main infrastructure. And again, to make sure everything's flowing properly.
Can I ask an unrelated question? Related but unrelated. How are we doing with the, in the past, we had those major issues with the fat birds and all the other issues that we, we seen less of that or not really?
Over the last four or five years, we've seen a lot less.
Oh, okay, that's good news.
We also changed our pumps at the larger pump stations to handle that type of activity that was to make it through.
Right.
Especially with the wipes, because that's kind of what you have to have.
Yeah.
The grease and the wipes together.
Right, right, right.
So that has helped also, but you were seeing a whole lot less of SSOs. Really a lot less.
That's good, thanks.
And the font program has been beneficial to a lot of the new restaurants coming on board. They're putting in the proper control systems in there.
Good, not dumping it yet.
Another fund that Ed is responsible for is the parking fund. Parking operations, this is for parking at lots at the train station, is the source of the revenue. And we are required to maintain them, even though they are technically state property. This fund is up twenty-eight thousand dollars, which is a three percent increase. And the biggest increase is in operation and maintenance expenses. And this is where we see ten percent of the facility's maintenance mechanic is really driving that increase here. Parking capital, fifty thousand dollars for retaining wall repair along Heights Road right of way. And the rock wall has shown some signs of falling over. And if not repaired now, there's a likelihood of failure. For both the sewer fund and the parking, or sewer capital and parking capital, those capital funds are paid for by a transfer from the operating fund. So those dedicated revenues cover the operations as well as the capital for those purposes.
Sorry, where is that long?
Right across the street from the Babel.
Okay.
It's listing, yeah. That way for a couple of years, it looks like it starts.
I mean, it's only going to cost fifty thousand, okay?
We got an estimate from a contractor, that's kind of our basic, yeah. And I built in a little contingency.
That's phenomenal.
Get some good contractors for certain things like that, cost factor.
What's the forty-eight hundred for rent, railroad rent, what is that?
The concessionaire, right, at the.
Darien, I mean, the Heights.
Is that going to happen?
Do we?
There's no concessionary yet.
Kind of put our placeholder.
I know, a long time.
I might put zero as a placeholder. I mean, I don't know that that's going to happen anytime soon.
About twenty years ago, they, they were there.
Yeah.
Less than that.
I mean.
They closed in COVID.
That's not happening, I mean, twenty-five, I don't think. And then for the Northern Heights parking lot, you have two hundred and seventy thousand for this fiscal year. That's just going to be held and used for whenever you decide to repave it.
We're going to try to get that done.
That, two seventy-five.
Yeah, the North Lot.
Yes, we're going to pave the North and South Lot together. Just timing, trying to find the time when those parking lots are. And it may, I might wait, I may wait till June to do it when the people are away, the parking is less, I could actually move people around and actually get to done.
Fridays are good days.
I need four days. Four days is someone that can strike parking spaces.
Yeah, hard to find.
And then the last other fund that we have is the Great Island Management Fund. This is the one we created a couple of years ago when we first acquired Great Island. The revenue source was primarily the rental income. And then it's used to cover maintenance management of the property itself, not anything. management of the property itself, not anything related to actual access or acquisition. What we're seeing here is a significant decrease in the revenues because the leases, I think we only have two active leases right now, and those do end at the end of the fiscal year. So this budget assumes no rental income. We still have operating expenses in fiscal '26, but they will be less, particularly for utilities. We don't have to heat the buildings to a comfortable temperature, it's really just to prevent freezing, electricity should be down. But in the grand scheme of things, there's still a lot of maintenance and management that has to occur on the property. The way this budget is built right now is, in the fiscal '25 budget, we have a 225, an assumed $225,000 contribution from the general fund to this fund to make it whole, because we were already predicting a decrease in revenue when the state was left. The fiscal '26 budget assumes that we make that full contribution, and we end up with a fund balance at the end of fiscal '25 of about $641,000. To fund the activities in fiscal '26, we use all of that fund balance, so we're zeroing out the fund, and there's a $76,000 transfer in from the general fund. My thinking on this is, basically, we're winding down the initial activities that this fund was used for, because by the end of fiscal '26, we should have a plan for that property. Sources of revenue may be different, how we choose to fund the maintenance may be different. So I'm kind of winding down this fund in fiscal '26 and zeroing out. That's the way it's structured right now.
So I have a couple of questions. One is, I saw somewhere, yeah, insurance. Are, is the insurance company aware that those buildings will be vacant, and has that impacted the rate?
We had the conversation with them that they were becoming vacant, but we haven't discussed it recently, and with them being vacant, it could very well increase the rates.
And my second question is, I know that we paid for the consulting, or the, we paid legal on the Reed Hildebrand contract, but we have two lawsuits, 23A regarding the trees that I'm confident are more than $5,000, significantly more, so how are we going to pay for that?
The lawsuits for 23A, the tree lawsuits, are being charged to the general fund. While the 23A widening and the activity that spurred those lawsuits is acceptable under the bond authorization because it was for the initial access, I'm not comfortable charging that level of legal fees and bonding for it, so we've been charging it to the general fund. The legal fees that you see in the, the management fund are related to tenant issues.
Okay, so, okay, so that, my last question then is, when we go to phase three and four, we'll have a contract, and we'll need, we'll need council's review, and the last contract ran us, I think, five or six grand to take a look at it, five or 6,000. So can we put in an additional five or 6,000 to cover the review of the contract for phase three and four? Which we'll be, we'll be doing, you know, in hopefully August.
So the, the purpose of this fund was just the ongoing management, not the development planning? For phase three and four with Reed Hildebrand, do you already have the $1.4 million appropriation? Does that cover phases three and four, or was that only one and two?
Not only one.
So then we would, we would go back for another appropriation to cover phase three and four, and we would include the legal costs associated with the contracting of that in that appropriation?
Okay, okay, because we didn't do that before. Okay, great, all right. I have no more questions on this.
So any ongoing expenses in two years, say, phases three and four will be happening, whatever building, whatever development is happening on the island, there will still be maintenance?
Yes.
How will that be handled? The Board of Finance wants to discuss that. When we first acquired the property, there was a very strong, several very strong voices for, let's separate out what it costs us to maintain Great Island, and therefore, we came up with the, the management fund. With the rental income going away, and say we have no other income, but we still have $400,000 of maintenance expenses, it would all be covered by a transfer from the general fund. So the Board, some on the Board of Finance have started raising the discussion of, should we just fold this into the general fund? Maybe it becomes another division under DPW. It's just different account numbers.
It spends a lot of time there already, so. Not to be, Ed's quizzing money. What do you want to do?
If it, if it's a situation where there is no other income, and it is fully supported by the general fund, it is just a cost of the town to maintain that property, and I would be in favor of folding it into the general fund.
Should go into the TA budget?
Yeah. If for some reason, what comes out of the vision planning, the master planning, all those phases, has something that would generate revenue to offset the maintenance costs, I think there's a valid reason to keep the management fund.
When you say offset, do you mean fully offset, or just a...
No, any non-zero number.
Yeah.
Any non-zero number, basically.
Yeah. So a, a lot of it does depend on where things go with the master plan, but for now, because now, you know, this is gonna end 15, 16 months from now, it assumes that everything winds down a year from now, when we're sitting back in this room talking about it, it may be different, we may have different information, but this'll get us through fiscal '26.
Jen, on, on the management plan, this is something we've talked about before. Some of those expenses that you have there, we're paying an outside vendor to do. Is there any allocation from work that's being done by the Public Works that gets allocated in there, or, I mean, how does that work out?
Not for any staff time.
Yeah.
But if they buy a screw to fix something on Great Island, it is charged to the management.
Okay, thank you.
Should they be allocating? We do that with Perks and Rec, right? No, we don't. We don't? No. But Parks and Rec knows how many hours per park within their own budget. They know how many hours they're spending at Cherry Lawn, they know how many hours they're spending at Baker, correct? No? I have never seen that information. Okay, so it's not, okay, I thought we had that. It's not that granular. Okay. No.
And, and to account for that, a question was at the actual...
Understood, understood, yeah. That's the last of the other funds, and that's the last of Ed's umbrella. Thank you.
Could I ask, just, I wanna go back to the refuge charges. I'm just curious, do we compare ourselves against New Canaan, Wilton, the other towns, just to see what they're charging for the retail and commercial dumping?
We, we did when we raised the price two years ago, and we'll do it again if we follow it, without any other changes.
Is our strategy to, like, stay within competitive ranges? I'm, I'm just wondering if we're getting arbitrage against the other towns?
Right now, we're one of the highest in MSW. I, I compared them to see where we thought we should be, but then running the numbers ended up a little bit higher. I would not be offended if some of the MSW went other places.
That's what I was saying, is like, have the...
Which means, maybe, you know, this year, it looks like we should discuss again whether we should be increasing that.
Thank you.
It's just such a convenient place to dump.
It happens to be one of the most convenient places to dump.
But I also think, you know, these rate, these increases on a real, you know, on a more regular basis are probably easier for, for people to, to manage, right?
Absolutely. I think our, one before the previous one was, was quite a while.
Right.
It was a little harder to digest.
Right.
But you didn't scare them, obviously, so.
Invited them. It is quite easy to get in and out of our facility.
It's very easy.
Well, Ed, you do an unbelievable job.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure that we see paper towel breakouts with other budgets, but you make it really easy.
That's more for me than anybody else.
Because I don't think we all need that granular.
Yeah, just a, not just a shout out to you, but for, for the work you do, but for the team you manage, I've had a chance to spend a lot more time with those guys and seeing what they do, and it's big stuff, it's small stuff, it's even just driving from here to New Canaan yesterday, and you can see the difference in plume quality when you cross over the New Canaan line, and that's thanks to the work that you guys do, and so it's, kudos to that whole team that they're watching. It's, it's a first-rate operation.
100%.
Yeah, 100%.
Something I, they take pride in, and I appreciate you guys noticing that mention. I do the same thing when I come in from Stanford to Darien, I wanted to see a difference.
There's a border, and you can't see the difference, for sure.
I think they know that, and they know where I come to, so.
I don't know, by me, it's always done, and it's great, you know? Has there was no delays in Darien last week? They don't need it. Those guys do a good job!
There were some, there were some high school students that were upset.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Ed.
My pleasure.
The next one on our list is transfers out, but we really just talked about this. This is, the only thing in here is the $76,000 that will go over to the Great Island Management Fund, and this was the $225,000 that we had in fiscal '25. Risk management, overall, it's about a $1,000 decrease. We have been able to keep this very stable. What is really resulting, or creating the stability this year, though, is we, it looks like we double-budgeted the umbrella liability. When we consolidated the accounts, we did leave $47,000 in the umbrella liability, and it looks like it is included in our quarterly premium, so we're not budgeting that separately in fiscal '26.
Are these estimates for the cost of those insurance rentals next year, or next year, or do you actually have this?
These are estimates. We do have a late, a rate lock agreement with KERMA, and so this assumes 5% increases, which is at the high side of that little lock agreement, but we won't actually get the renewal rates for a couple of months, the real ones.
Hey Jen, so boiler and machinery, so some of these that are zero, they've been folded into...
Into this one lap insurance.
Right.
In prior years, it was really a, somewhere back in time, there may have been logic to the allocation, but then it was just carried forward that we split at these percentages between these lines. We just pay one premium for our overall liability and property insurance.
So we still have boiler?
We still have boiler coverage, it's...
Words just full.
Just budgeting it the way that we pay for it. We do receive revenue through insurance recoveries. There's two pieces to that. When someone goes out on workers' comp insurance, we pay their salary per union agreements and workers' comp requirements, but we do get wage recovery from KERMA. So those recovery checks go into this insurance recoveries, and once per year, we also get a membership distribution from KERMA. And it's varied. In the past, it used to be significantly higher. We had one year when we didn't receive it, we've started receiving it again, so for this budget, we just go by a three-year average. Employee benefits. Oddly enough, I'm kind of excited about this one. Medical insurance. So our initial indication from United Healthcare was a 21% increase on our medical renewal. That got us thinking, we, it's been kicked around a little bit for the last couple of years, what are our alternatives? This is growing at an unsustainable rate. So we looked at stay fully insured, we can change carriers, see what they do, but we just change carriers, they kind of do the bait and switch. We could move to keeping our same plan, but be self-insured. That doesn't save all that much because our claims are what they are, which is what our insurers are basing the premium on. We might save some on some overhead, but it's not a significant difference. And then we started looking at the state partnership plan. Municipalities can join the partnership plan. It is very good insurance, it is significantly less expensive than what we pay. The rates have been more stable. They insure 60,000 lives, and so we're very seriously considering that. If we are able to move to that, it would be about a million-dollar-plus reduction from the number that I have here. The challenges with that, two things. We need to negotiate it with the unions. Based on their contractual language, it says that we will provide a high deductible plan, and it says it will be equal or better coverage. I think we meet the equal but better in terms of the medical coverage, but the pharmacy plan is different, and it's, the state partnership plan is not a high deductible plan, it's a point-of-service plan. So we, we have to negotiate that with them. We have had initial conversations with them because budget discussions were gonna be public, and we didn't want anyone to think that we had already made a decision, we just wanted to let them know we were exploring this avenue, and a couple of the unions were very, very interested in it. They know people who have moved to it, or are currently on it. There was good feedback. We solicited feedback from area towns. In terms of coverage, everybody's very happy. But the other piece that we have to look at is a disruption report, and we haven't been able to get that part yet. We need a pharmacy report from United Healthcare so that we can compare it against, you know, what medications are our people on, and what would be the disruption in coverage, or what doctors do they see, what would be the disruption in coverage. So once we get that, we do want to start negotiations with the unions. It would save the town money, and it would save the employees' money, all while still providing very good coverage. But that's an unknown. So in the meantime, our broker also went back to United Healthcare. They came down, they offered us, they came down to 13.4%, which was...
From 21?
From 21 to 13.4%.
Wow!
But then our broker went back to them and said, "We're looking at the partnership plan. If the town of Darien agrees to look at only the partnership plan and United Healthcare, will you give us an 8% renewal?" And as of tonight, they did agree to that.
Wow.
So I think our worst-case scenario is an 8% renewal with United Healthcare, which is a $500,000 decrease from the number that's here.
From the 5,991.
Yep. And then in the meantime, so my recommendation is that that's what we do at this level because that's our known, but in the meantime, once we get those disruption reports, we'll start negotiating with the unions and try to get to the partnership plan. I think, you know, worst-case scenario, if we stay with United Healthcare at 8% for a year, that's actually pretty good, and if we can't, you know, get there with the unions right now, we have the next year to work on it. But I think that the state partnership plan is a very wise move for a group our size that's experiencing the volatility that we've been experiencing.
And that, that's the library plan?
The library has been on it for a few years. We spoke with Kira about it. They're very happy with it.
But they just, but didn't they just increase it 10%?
They had assumed 5%. The state has told them the initial indication is 11%, but the final rates won't be set until April. I'm not quite sure where they got the 5% from, because typically, the insurers start higher. When you ask them earlier, and they, they work down as they get more experience. But even if it's 11%, it's on a lower-cost plan. I had compared where those rates are, rolled forward at 11% versus our 21%, or our 21%, and the town was saving well over a million dollars, and employees on premiums were saving about $170,000, and then on top of that is what they're putting into their HSA to cover their deductible. Not everybody's fully funding it. If they were, it'd be like $300,000 savings, so I think to the employees, it's somewhere in the middle. The one thing that we may encounter is we do pay people who opt out of our insurance. They, all except for one union that only gets a $2,000 payment for opting out. They, all except for one union that only gets a two thousand dollar payment for opting out. The others get one-third of the cost of the tier of coverage. So it could be that some people, because it's gotten so expensive, it works for them to opt out if they have coverage elsewhere. But when it comes down to lower rates, this may be the more attractive option for them and their family. So they may come back on. I think there'll be some people that come back on. But the numbers definitely make sense to move to the partnership plan.
So quick question. The seven thirty-five, that would be knocked down by five hundred?
Right.
If we stayed with United Healthcare for the eight percent? And I'm sorry, what would the cost be, the increase, if we went with the partnership plan?
It would actually be a decrease from last year.
Okay.
Absolute best-case scenario, instead of the seven hundred thousand dollar increase, we'd probably have a five hundred thousand dollar decrease over here.
Or the eight percent, okay.
Uh, no.
Oh, oh!
Five hundred thousand dollar, eight percent gives us a two hundred thousand dollar increase this year.
Right, so we would take five hundred thousand off of that.
Yep.
So it'll be a decrease of two hundred fifty thousand.
No, a decrease of five hundred thousand dollars year-over-year.
It's, if we did that plan, it would be, the delta's a million and four. So in other words, instead of the plus seven hundred, you basically have minus five hundred.
Right, interesting.
Who's the provider?
Anthem, they, they used to be with United Healthcare, so they, there is the possibility of them changing carriers. The plan had a very bad reputation among municipalities. It was?
The United Healthcare one?
No, the, the state partnership plan.
Got it.
But it's been around now probably close to twenty years. They, if we go in, it's a three-year commitment. If we want to come out before those three years, there is a charge to come out. But if they, one of the fears of towns was we lose any control over plan design. We don't have that much control anyway, because we have union contracts. The partnership plan has a provision where if they make plan design changes, if we don't like them, we can leave. So I think that is a big improvement to their, the way that that plan works. So that if, if there's a plan designed and we absolutely don't agree with it, with the change, we can, we can move out. I don't know what else to say. It's a very, very appealing.
Yeah, well, great negotiating. So if you do the eight percent, are we able to leave after a year? There's no lock-in?
Yep.
Yeah, it's the same plan.
We just commit to stay with them for just for the year.
Just on timing, obviously, you're going to vote tomorrow on your budget. So if the negotiations aren't done by the time the Board of Finance does it, then you'll come to the RTM and we'll do that change of reduction of expenses on budget night.
You got it, well, whenever it's ready, they, whichever.
But not, we will need to commit to United Healthcare probably mid-April. So if, for some reason, we can't get the negotiations done by then, we will have to commit to United Healthcare. And that also will allow us to get everything in place for open enrollment, which occurs in May.
So you'll know before they go?
Yeah, so we might have like a week or two beyond Board of Finance.
Okay, so that's still allowed, that still comes to us, and we just do it on budget night?
Right.
And it's already built into the middle rate?
Right.
As opposed to something they have to do that night?
Right. The only other thing on benefits that I wanted to point out is it appears we're starting to see the shift in, and we've only had one valuation that started to reveal this. But we moved Public Works, Park and Rec Union, and Town Hall Union, and dispatchers to a defined contribution plan. So we're seeing an increase in our budget there. It's up forty-seven thousand dollars, because as incumbents leave and new hires come on, they're going into the DC plan. But we have a forty-two thousand dollar decrease in the town pension contribution. We don't see that in the police pension contribution. They're invested the same, they do have different membership makeup and different benefit profiles. But we are seeing a decrease in the town pension. And it could be that we're starting to see that shift from moving people over to the DC, which would be fantastic. And then that's all I have on benefits. Contingency is very straightforward. We have a decrease in our employee salary set aside, just because last year we had non-reps. The dispatchers were part of the Town Hall Union, we had the full Town Hall Union unsettled at this time. Everything is, is settled except for non-reps and the nine dispatchers. So we're able to reduce the employee salary set aside. And then finally, for tonight, debt service. This one is really a function of decisions made long ago for appropriations, and decisions that the Board of Finance makes when they issue the debt and what rates we can get. The Board of Finance will be discussing our next bond issue. I'm going to have it on their agenda next week. Right now, what this budget assumes is that we bond the forty-nine million that we have as notes for Great Island, and that we issue about forty-five million of notes, mostly for HHR, and then I think it was about four million dollars for other active projects. So the overall budget is up about two point five million dollars. The assumptions on this new issue are about two point six million dollars. So if we, if the world was lovely and we didn't have to issue any more debt, we would be pretty much even on debt service year-over-year. But with the new issue, the way this budget made the assumptions, it's about a one point six million dollar increase in school interest, school debt interest for HHR, about one point nine million in interest for the town for Great Island, and about a hundred thousand for the other town projects. But this will get refined once the Board of Finance decides what they actually want to issue, how they want to structure it, which ones they want to do as bonds and notes. And then we'll actually have the sale probably the same day that the Board of Finance votes, so we will know what actual debt service will be, because we'll have our rates and our, our final sale numbers.
How much are you planning with HHR to be either doing bond or notes? I mean, we did twenty-three, right, something like that?
We did more like thirty. I think we did around ten million per school. This time, based on the cash flows and just assumptions about school construction grant reimbursements, I think it's about forty million.
Okay, so that still means that we have about another thirty to come down the following year?
Yes.
That of whatever reimbursement you get.
Yep.
Yeah, for that debt presentation I'm working on, one thing that would be interesting to see would be the components of school principal, right? So for this, this, like which bonds is that principal, are those principal payments referring to? So we can see sort of which ones are outstanding.
Yeah, so for budget purposes, we do it by which issue, but then we can go back into those, really, once, in my world, once it's issued. I really don't care what the purpose was. And then it just becomes, oh, that's the twenty-twenty GOV. But we can go back into these issues and see what the projects were.
I wouldn't do it for this, but for that presentation that I wrote, that's what I wanted to describe, to see kind of what the sources of borrowing were?
Yep.
And the sources have changed by issuance? So people get a sense of, well, we started with this much debt, but these have paid down. But now we got this new debt, and you can just see what that is. That, that's the RTM debt presentation that gets sketched out, but that's what I'm going to present as part of all that.
I would also love to see a future, add a couple of years. It's my understanding that twenty-twenty-seven is going to be?
Actually, my presentation goes out past the middle six.
Wow.
Right.
That's awesome.
Well, because what I want to do is I want to paint a very, a longer term that says, how much debt are we talking about?
Yeah.
And what, what's the prospect for taxpayers?
Yeah.
Just so people could get their minds around it and come to a general conclusion as to whether all this is okay or not.
Agreed.
That's my hypothesis. It's, it's okay, but I want to be able to show it and prove it.
Right. I think it's important, we've allotted it.
Good debt.
No, and I, I'm on HHR, so I, you know, just for follow-up transparency investment.
The reason I'm doing this presentation is, to your point, everybody's got angina over the debt qualities, right? Because it's not just, it's Oxbridge, it's HHR, it's Great Island, it's all the other debt we have before.
Fire trucks and everything, right, exactly.
Holy schmoly, this is a lot, and it's at historic highs. We've never had this much debt.
Correct.
At the same time, I think it's eminently manageable, and I want to make sure people are comfortable with it, because we've got some projects coming up that I think there's been some trepidation around, because people just have that floating around in their head. So I'm going to try to make that.
Like peer tree.
Yeah, we've written the presentation, we've got some math to do.
Right.
But I'll share it with this board in advance for your comment.
Please, thank you.
And then I'm going to present it to, to the RTM at February meeting is what I want to do, so.
Really, you made that happen?
You guys just keep, are you even going to meet again? I mean, geez.
I don't know, if you give us something.
Well, we'll have something for February.
Well, and I kind of want to get that out as part of the budget process, because it'll give people some comfort around where we stand in terms of town debt. So I'd like to do that.
We, I mean, Seth and I had a conversation this morning. It was twenty-five thousand, we're not going to have people running in. But it'd be nice if, if you're doing a presentation on debt, that's good. Usually in February, I give an update on Jen's six-month and Brutal's six months of where we've spent so far.
There you go.
And then I think we're also, there's a desire to do something on TV seventy-nine, what they're doing on head apps, I think, and things like that. So if we have nothing more than a really good that you highlighted, if you're headlining, then maybe we'll get people in, because nobody wants to hear me anyway.
Headliner!
We'll solve problems.
Headliner.
But I, John, I like your idea of, I get Jen that you, that it all gets smopped together, but I think.
Well, but the purpose, I mean, these are all, this is exactly what we need to have.
Right, exactly.
The purpose of my presentation is different, which is to allay these fears, so.
But it's good information to have, yeah, that we should keep that, yeah.
Yep, big type pre-colors, so. Well, that's what I do.
That's good, I answered your question for me, I was going to ask you how.
Don't worry, it's, it's all, it's all, I think it's going to be clear by the time we're finished, so.
John, if you don't mind, I suppose to set today, I'll give them another call saying maybe we should have it, because we'll need more rules on Monday.
What, this Monday?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yeah, put me down then, I'll be ready.
We'll do.
Remind, remind me of the day of the RTM meeting?
By the way, after everybody gets back from school, I'll give you the actual.
The twenty-first.
If you're taking the road.
The twenty-fifth, okay, I'll be ready.
All right, that was our last item for tonight.
Any final questions for the evening? Any else you'd like to?
I did get a little bit of, I made a little progress on our follow-ups from last night. I did send to all of you the little bit of information that I got from Kids in Crisis. Not overly helpful, I don't think, but they did provide the overall budget for their text line implementation. So you have that. I have reached out to Darien Fire and asked them to give me their, their thoughts on doing the HVAC with the roof. They did get back to me about the turnout gear dryer, and it was pretty much the explanation that I said that they do kind of interim lighter cleanings, and the rotational gear is for those required every six months and the heavy exposure. So they, they, even with the rotational gear, they, they feel that they need another dryer. I added the apparatus replacement schedule in OpenGov, and Park and Rec is looking into if both ponds are dredged at the same time, if there's any economies of scale from that.
So Jen, we have three, three new FTEs?
Technically, four, because there's the Fire Administrator and the Deputy Fire Marshal are brand-new for fiscal twenty-six.
And those are around one fifty all-in, both, right?
All-in, each, yeah. And then there's the two facilities positions that were approved middle of fiscal twenty-five. They weren't in the budget, so budgetarily, they're new FTEs. But in terms of reality, they do already exist.
Well, but it would be.
It's a driver for.
It's kind of plus one net FTE change for those, because we've got half of them, half of the two people this year. We'll have two full next year.
No, we didn't, we didn't have them in the fiscal twenty-five budget at all.
All-in, all, okay.
But we did have a half-year funding of a patrol officer in fiscal twenty-five, and now fiscal twenty-six has the full year.
And isn't the additional deputy fire marshal, is that full year or half?
That is a half-year.
How many FTEs will be new in the budget for the police? Are there any other additional coming up for tomorrow? Or is it the four that we've just discussed total for the entire budget?
That's it.
That's just public.
Yep, they're not requesting anything additional.
No change in their officers.
For some reason, thank you.
No, okay. I think down the road with all the redevelopments, you know, they have it in mind that there may be a need.
For some reason, I had in my mind that they were, okay, thank you.
One other question. I'm assuming the grant list valuation was available the day after the thirty-fourth was out?
Yes, I have received it.
Can you, can you share that, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions, anything else?
On the fire department capital expenditure thing, it's been a while since I looked at it, but I could swear that last year, in the sort of the eighty-five-page PDF section describing our plans for the fire department, there was a discussion of replacing fire trucks over an eight- or ten-year period. And in the spreadsheet that I saw, there's actually, there's a schedule where we're planning to replace vehicles, one in twenty-five to twenty-six, one in twenty-six to twenty-seven, et cetera. So it looks to me like we've shortened the plan for the replacement of the fleet from eight or ten years down to four years.
Actually, they have a thirty-year replacement plan. The track, trucks, I think the rescues, the useful life, I want to say about fifteen years, and a larger truck is a frontline apparatus, I think is usually around twenty-year useful life. It could be the way that PDF was saved, that maybe it wasn't shown on that.
If I, if I look at the spreadsheet, it said engine forty-one to be replaced this year, engine forty-two next year, rescue twenty-five the year after, and rescue thirty-three the year after.
Well, those, well.
We have four of them in a four-year period.
Staggered like this, but they're, they were purchased like this twenty-five years ago.
Okay, so, but there was no, there was no information about acquisition date in these spreadsheets, so it's, we can't tell as to whether.
Fair point, but you're right, the, the, they, they are occurring kind of in that stair-step pattern. But that's because that's how they were acquired fifteen or twenty years ago. But we have that information, that's fair point.
Yeah, Jen, can you calculate the incremental property tax revenue from the developments to demonstrate whether or not the new developments are paying for the incremental FTEs that they were born?
So that's not quite the way to think about that, I think. And the reason, I mean, they, they account for a greater share of the overall grant list, and so they will pay a greater share of the tax burden. In other words, the slice of their pie increases. So for a given increase in total tax revenue, they're paying more on a relative basis than everybody else pays a little bit less. So the question is, is does that incremental increase actually cover costs?
I'd just like to know what the numbers are. Because if we're going to fund, we funded some already, and we're going to fund more FTEs that have been identified as necessary because we're developing, because of these three developments. I'd like to know what the revenue offset of that is. And I think to, the revenue offset to Darien is property tax revenue. There might be other, there's, there might be others kind of at one time, but ongoing to fund the FTE expense is property tax revenue. And it might be a wash, it might be a subsidy, it might be an overage. I'd just like to know what it is, that's it. I'm not suggesting we should reject an FTE if it doesn't cover, I just like to know what the, what the, what the math is.
I think if you speak, Steve Alany, one time, I recall, very early on when we were looking at these projects, Steve has a way to calculate out what the tax revenue is per square foot or something. So you may want to touch base with Steve as well to see if he might have something to work those lines.
Well, I'm looking at for something as simple as these three developments, or five or six, however you want to think about it, generated X million of incremental grant lists.
Pre-development, post-redevelopment.
Exactly, before and after. Not like, it's not, it doesn't have to be granular, like every year, right? Before and after, that grant list generated at a mill rate, at the constant current mill rate, this amount of property tax revenue. And then look at what we're paying for, for the additional FTEs, and just understand whether we're subsidizing FTEs, or whether the, or they're being paid for by the incremental property.
If it's linear.
I think it just helps, it helps to make a decision more informed.
So Dan, are you, are you? So Dan, are you, are you interested in the permitting funds that we received or any of the upfront?
No, because I think those are one-time kind of transactional fees. And there's costs, there's other costs associated with those. I'm just looking at, again, the carrying cost of these incremental FTEs because of the developments against the revenue.
No, I understand.
And I'm, again, I'm not signaling any discomfort with the FTEs. I'm not signaling comfort with the FTEs necessarily yet either. I'd just like to know whether they're paying, being paid for by the incremental property tax or not. That's...
So another question that you're trying to answer, I mean, because I'm not sure that, the fact that there are additional FTEs required to accommodate those buildings, that that changes the answer in terms of whether we permit them or have them at all. So, I mean, in other words, it is what it is. You've got to provide those resources. It's no different than if we densified residential housing, where we did some other thing, you're still going to have to have services to provide for all that. So I'm not quite sure how, how knowing this changes the answer of the question you're talking about.
I'm a little, I'm struggling a little bit. It's a pretty, it's a very simple question. How much additional revenue are developments generating property tax? And, and I'm going to compare that to the cost of the, of the incremental cost that those developments require. It's an incremental cost analysis.
Yeah, we do that.